I'm Clark. It's now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tonight, we are actually here for the annual town meeting. I'd like to do the pledge allegiance and then I'll read the call. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to do the power of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So thank you all for showing up tonight. We appreciate it. So tonight, again, the annual town meeting, which includes, number one, the review of the state of the town report, two, the review of the five-year capital plan, and number three, to receive the annual report for the permanent boards, commission, agencies, committees, and the town order room report. Selectwoman Peggy Lyons will actually give a presentation, and she and the board are here to answer any questions that you might have. Okay? Great. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. This is an annual presentation. It'll look very familiar to you. I'm my fifth one now, so you'll see we updated and tried a lot of it, just kind of the state of the town. And so I'll go through this presentation and happy to answer questions. The board selectmen actually just finished our first budget workshop, so they're all here tonight also, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have from the presentation. So with that, I will start with what we're going to talk about. There is copies available if you want to hand out right up here. And then this will be available on the town website if anybody not hearing anything. Hold on a second. Jeanie, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I got a weird message saying to turn the volume up. Can you hear me now?
That's okay.
Okay. I think this is just because I'm using the laptop. All right, with that, so what we're going to cover is our community's strengths and challenges, what progress we've made. And actually, that's just the what we made in 2023 and what we're doing for 2024. A little bit about the budget trends, talk about the capital plan, look at our debt profile, and then look at a lot of the projects that are going on, what the status of those projects are, and then some of the upcoming initiatives. There we go. I don't know. I've got all these weird messages in the top from Zoom, so just give me a second. So anyways, a lot of these community strengths, we all know, we obviously live in a very desirable place to live, with great school systems, low density living, a lot of outdoor amenities, a great, highly educated workforce that proved to be very adaptable during the pandemic, a very vibrant downtown that we love with lots of small businesses, a lot of volunteerism in town, and a reliable delivery of core town services. And we also have a very supportive, engaged, thoughtful community, and a lot of this came out, I think, during the strategic planning process, where you'll see these similar strengths and challenges are listed in here. We also have a great economic profile. We have a very high median income. It's gone up quite a bit in the last couple of years at $156,000. We have low unemployment, and it's generally the state has very low unemployment. We're even below the state. So that's great news. We have a strong small business community, and we still are living through a booming real estate market. There's still low inventory. We've seen a strong strength where it is a desirable place to live. We see a lot of people wanting to move to Madison. So houses move very quickly off the market, but we also see a lot of building activity. People investing in their homes, which is great. They want to live here, and they want to keep up their properties and make them great places to live. We also have strong town finances. We're AAA rated community. We have a strong rainy day fund, a record one of that. We have very stable tax collections, and we've been very successful at actually getting outside funding into the town over the last couple of years through some of our grant applications to cover a lot of our projects. And we have a stable mill rate growth, so we try to keep things no spikes and keep things very steady. Challenges is we're a coastal community, and we've all been living through all these storms and flooding and everything that we've been seeing happening in our community. And so as a coastal community with rising seawaters, we've seen climate change. We've seen a lot of issues. It also taxes our public resources and our public infrastructure. That's a challenge. And so we're trying to address that through a lot of things that the town is doing, either through investment or through our coastal resiliency committee. Inflation has impacted the town in terms of some of our budgeting, as well as our capital projects, and we've seen it hit the labor market. It's a very tight labor market still, and we've seen it both at town hall, trying to fill positions sometimes, as well as with our small businesses trying to get help. I know there's been a, I often talk to them, just getting part-time help is really difficult these days. We have an aging population. I think it's 30% of the population now is over the age of 60, and that's a demographic trend that we've seen. All Connecticut has experienced that. We've seen a little bit of a change over the last two to three years because of some of the surge of people moving into the town from COVID, but overall, we have an aging population. You know, we're also seeing some of the long-term impacts of COVID on the mental health of our residents, and we've been investing in resources to make sure that they get the support they can get. And then we have a lot of balance, trying to balance all these competing interests in town. A lot of people are very passionate about their issues and things they care about and want the town to address, so trying to balance all that and keep things within the resources that we have. And then I think we've also had to do a lot of catch-up investment because of the lack of investment, I think, in previous years in some of our capital resources. So the school renewal plan, we kind of deferred maintenance for a long time, and it caught up to us, and so that's when we had to go forward with this major reorganization and renewal plan for the schools. Academy, we all know the story of that, sitting for 20 years and trying to make decisions about that. We have the surf club that we have to address. We have a lot of older buildings. We have our town hall. Things that need love in some ways or decisions made one way or the other, and we need to invest in them and make sure that there's, you know, become functional and modern buildings that, you know, we're, so we're not kicking the can down the road on a lot of their maintenance and investment. And then in terms of affordability, I think that's become a huge issue with Madison residents, trying to keep the town affordable so that they can, people can stay in town, but also to attract new residents into town. So that we have different generations, and we have a workforce to support us, so people can live in town, and also trying to create a multi-generational community. And these are all things that were in the strategic plan objectives that the residents wanted, and they're challenges. And so how are we going to address them? And that's some of the things we're going to be working on as a community. And housing is one of the big issues, so that's a big topic the next year with our affordable housing committee. And I know the planning and zoning commission is going to be tackling our zoning regulations and how that impacts, those impacts on housing and our need for housing. But then there's also balancing that with people's concern about development and changing the nature of our community, what it looks like, the open space, you know, and so trying to balance all those needs and come up with some solutions. Terms of policy, I think the town has moved forward on a lot of things. The capital projects are now really getting, going into high year this year and next. You'll see groundbreaking in 2024 of a new school. And regarding point, there's a whole list I'll go through later of where we are, some of these larger capital projects. And then there's more in the pipeline for 2025, so it's going to be a very busy couple of years in Madison with a lot of the projects going on. The grants have helped offset that, so that it's reduced the need to use local taxpayer dollars. We're also looking at not just infrastructure in terms of buildings, but, you know, we had a lot of conversation about utility issues and communication and other things, other fundamental infrastructure things to improve our community and improve our services. We've also continued to move forward on looking at all our different boards and commissions. We're a very fortunate town because we have a huge volunteer base, and really, we have over 60 boards and commissions in town, over 150 volunteers that make a lot of decisions in town and manage things in town for us. And, you know, some of that is trying to look at that and make sure that things are focused in the right way, people are getting out of their service in town, so we're going to be looking at a lot of the charges for those and how do we make some of these boards and commissions more effective. The affordable housing committee I mentioned is going to become a more permanent committee this year. They were appointed last year, and they have an affordable housing plan that the town adopted last year that they'll start implementing. And then we have a facilities committee that's going to be, it was appointed last year, but they're going to be actually going into high year this year, and the goal is to create a master plan for all town facilities. So that instead of making one-off decisions on building, which is kind of how we've managed in the past, we want a holistic 10-year plan on what we want these buildings to be used for, and, you know, where we're going to invest in and where we're maybe going to redeploy or sell or consolidate. So they're going to be working on that master plan. Policy, we got a lot done in the last year. The board selectmen passed a new floodplain ordinance and took a lot of time listening to the public to ensure that that addressed a lot of the public concerns. Senior tax relief, we did some great updates and improved the benefits of the senior tax relief program, merged some things and streamlined the application process. That was all approved last year. We also increased and improved the firefighter pension plan. And then we passed an ordinance on cannabis, which was a big topic for a long time and made a decision to ban retail establishments in town. So those are some of the policy things. And then planning, we've been, since I came into office, the focus has been on long-term planning. So we adopted our strategic plan in December, so this is going to start being the template of how we're going to measure a lot of the things that we do going forward, including our budget. The planned conservation and development is due to be completed soon. They started in 2023. I think they'd hope to be done by now, but they're probably behind a few months, but we hope by the spring of 2024, that will be completed by the planning zoning commission. And then our wastewater facility study, which looks at all this septic systems in the town, a study that has not been done since the 1980s. We're excited to say it's finally going to be completed, and we'll highlight some important things that the town may need to do to address possible future, you know, environmental issues, just overall issues for certain parts of the community that are struggling. Town operations, you know, we've tried some pilot programs. Some of you may have participated in the food waste diversion program, and so what we're looking at overall now in our, how we handle our waste in town, or, and they're going to be looking at different ideas because we're, the state is really in a waste crisis right now in terms of we're shipping and spending a lot of money. This is a budget issue. It's an environmental issue, but it's also a budget issue. We're spending a lot of money shipping our waste out of the state, you know, rather than trying to manage it and reduce what we actually put into landfills. Another thing I'll talk later about is a microtransit pilot program that we're going to be launching in June, which basically offers public transit, Uber, like Uber, on-demand services. So it's a really exciting thing, and I'll talk about that later. It's a grant that we partnered with Guilford on, but it's going to be a new service and really give a whole different dimension to our public transportation options here in Madison. So if you live in North Madison and you want to go somewhere in Guilford, you can basically call up this public transportation for $1.75, and they will take you door to door. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. In terms of, we're always trying to do better here in town. One of the things I've been trying to do is put more discipline in our, just how we manage our employees and greater accountability for our staff. We have great staff, but we've never really had a formal performance review process for town employees, and we implemented that in 2023 also, and that'll be a recurring thing every year. So everybody in town will get an annual review now, which was not ever occurring before. We're also investing in public safety and mental health resources. We've seen that through the budget, and doing things, realigning, shifting staff between departments where we think things are more critical, leveraging technology at times to make things easier for the public. Hopefully, you've had some positive interfaces with some of the new programs we've rolled out and services and software. And we're also focusing on trying to invest in climate-friendly assets, whether it's a geothermal system here at the town campus that they're going to start working on next week, some of the electric vehicle chargers that we rolled out for more access for residents, but also for our town fleet. Always evaluating when it makes sense. You know, we're not going to do any massive rollout of anything. We pilot programs. Let's do this. We'll use EVs when it makes sense, and we will stick with more traditional modes when necessary, especially when we're dealing with public safety and dump trucks and things like that, so we know we aren't there with electric vehicles. Communications, I think we can always improve on that. I think we've made a lot of progress in the last couple of years, but we need, we keep adding new ways to reach out to the public. We have the new app that was launched in 2023 also, so that was another way people can get their information easily about what was going on in town. We are going to be rolling out a new software, financial software, so you can look at the budget in a much more pleasing way rather than the document you usually get online. That'll have some graphs and colors and bar charts and things like that. That will hopefully be ready by this May, so you'll see that with the new budget when we come out with the proposed budget. But it'll be kind of a nice way to see it, much more user-friendly to find information out. Budget trends, you know, we've been fortunate that revenues continue to grow at reasonable rates over the last couple of years just because we've had such a great, I think, real estate market, and also we've been, with our fund balance, we've had a lot of interest income and things like that that has helped our revenue. We have a record undesigned fund balance, so, which is something that the boards have talked often about, about how best to use that and make sure that, and I'm not talking about our rainy day fund or, you know, our, usually we keep 10% of our operating expenses as a safety net, and then we have money over that that the town, and that's because we overcollect on our taxes. We make very, when we set the mill rate, we make very conservative assumptions about how much in taxes we're going to collect. So we are very conservative in how we do that, how much revenue we're going to get from the state. We cannot budget for all the revenue that we get from the state. We only budget for a portion of it because we know that sometimes Hartford doesn't deliver on promises, or they make changes during the budget year, so we try to be conservative so we're not caught off guard. The other thing is we try to keep the mill rate growth at a much more steady rate, under 2%. We try to do that because we don't want to have surprises and spikes. And we're going to, and we have a lot of plans and try to keep that going forward with, as the, some of the new debt comes on board, and we're seeing that in this year's budget already. And then I've always really focused on trying to keep the operating budget growing at a reasonable level or lower level. So that's that base budget includes, and 70% of it is fixed costs. It's staff, healthcare, you know, insurance contracts, things like that. And so we've been successful at slowing the growth of that. That's kind of like the core budget. And when I came into office, it was growing at over 7%, now it's growing under 3%. So last year's, it was at 2.8%. So it's trying to manage that base budget, and that helps us then when we set the mill rate. So overall, very healthy financials. The town is doing well, and we're doing everything we can to keep costs down. And I'll talk a little bit later about the capital and, or here we go, capital fund. So this just is a reflection. There's a whole capital plan that's available online. The CIP committee made a recommendation two weeks ago that will go into the budgeting process, but this basically shows what we're going to be spending this year on different, different capital projects. This is not a budget. What we do is we have a fund, and we, we add a little money every year, planning out what we're going to have to spend. So this just shows what the spending is actually going to be. This is not what is budgeted every year. But you'll see that, you know, roughly 30% is going to education projects, 26% to public works, and then with some of the other departmental breakdowns. And there's an entire volume of books and dig deeper into it and lay out what the projects are and what they're for. And then there's a separate budget that shows what we built into the actual annual budget to support the capital plan. And then also, we have our referendum projects, and we do this through bonding. And so this is our debt profile, and it shows that we expect to have by the end of this fiscal year about $23 million in long-term debt. But we're also seeing a decline in some of our debt from the high school, is pretty much, I think, in another year, we'll pay it off the high school bond. So as we have new debt ramping up because of the new projects, we have old debt that's getting paid down. And then this year, or the end of, in December, we issued $30 million in one-year, they're called bond anticipation notes, one-year notes that we pay back at the end of the year, and then $10 million in long-term bonds. And the issuance was very well received by the market. We also had Moody's reaffirm our AAA credit rating. They're very pleased with how the town is managing everything. Had a very successful offering, but this gives you an idea of kind of what that profile looks for debt. And one of the things that we've been doing is knowing this outlook and what the debt is going to be looking like, the interest expense. We want to manage it so it doesn't hit the budget like this. So you'll see it peaks in 2030. The debt expense at about $8.4 million, and then starts kind of slowly going down after that. So what are our challenges then with our capital program? You know, the goal is to avoid spikes in the mill rate, so we have, how many years have we had CIP now? Seven or eight, so, which has been a fantastic win for the town because it requires, this is kind of our way to save up for projects. So if you think something's happening, coming down the pike, a large capital project, a major repair that has to be done, we try to plan for it, and we come up with an estimate, and then every year we put money away in CIP as a savings account to pay for that project. So what's happened in the past sometimes is that, you know, in order to cover the operating budget, sometimes the capital budget used to get cut. We said, well, we just won't do those projects and we'll push them off. That happened for a long time, and that's where we ended up with some of the issues with our school buildings and some of the issues with our town buildings. We kept kind of pushing off those things. What we've tried to do is find a way to do both and manage both. And so we're always kind of making, you know, decisions about balancing that, knowing that we're going to have some of, because you can, we pay for a lot of our capital projects through savings accounts, and then we pay for some of them through bonding. And so our town historically has tended to be less wanting to bond for things and more wanting to save, right? And so that's what CIP is suggesting, is making those savings accounts to pay for these capital needs. So we have to address, you know, we have the bonding, so we know the debt service is coming up, but we also have maintenance needs of the, just other buildings that we're not, we don't have massive bonding projects, but we still need to figure out what to do with the surf club, the Royal Town Hall, improvements that have to be made in this building, so we have to figure out a way to pay for that, and that's through the capital plan. We've had, been hit by some of these cost escalations that really started kicking in in 2021, where the construction market really started raising the costs on a number of things. So that's hit some of our projects, you know, you kind of, the process to put it into CIP is you basically put something in and you save up for five years for that. So you're projecting out five years, and you have to build it in escalation. You're guessing, and you're saying, we think it's going to cost this. You put it in, and then you start saving for that amount. But sometimes it's just wrong, or things happen, you know, something happens with whatever the project is, and the budget's off. So we've had to deal with that sometimes and look at it to ways to fund that. And then we also have a number of buildings we've got to make some decisions on. The school renewal plan is closing three buildings, Ryerson, Jeffrey, and Town Campus Learning Center. So we've got to make some decisions about what are we going to do with those buildings. We don't want to sit there for 20 years, again, like with the academy, right? We want to make sure that we have a plan to, you know, close, sell, repurpose, whatever, those buildings. And then we have our aging pistols that I talked about, where we have to make some decisions. And so we might look to sell some things as well, and so that's what the process with the master plan is going to help us make those decisions on those things. So part of to address this capital, you know, demands that we have and budget pressure and debt service is last, well, actually in 2022, I was looking for our finance director, Bea Appelades, we came up with this program called the Madison Investment Plan. And it kind of went through and said, okay, here are all the ways we're going to try to keep the budget growing as low as possible, leverage our fund balance, which is very high, and try to get as many things out of the capital plan and pay for it with grants. And so we've tried to use our excess surplus fund balance. We've tried to use grants. We've tried to get as many capital projects done as possible while minimizing what the taxpayer has to pay for local. And so that's part of the Madison Investment Plan. It's also projecting out and saying, I'm going to invest a bunch of money in CIP now, so I don't have to put as much in three years from now when the debt comes on. So this way, you know, it's just basically, it's like you deciding, I'm going to double up on my child savings, college savings account now so that I don't have to pay for it three years from now, and I can use that money for something else. We're saying we're going to need to pay for it for debt service. So we've tried to, we've made some infusions into our CIP account. And then we've also beefed up the budget, and you'll see that when you look at that line item of what we put into the capital fund, there was some big jumps in it. But then the idea is you can flatten it each year now, and then any increases would come from just the debt service. So it's a way of balancing all this, and it's using all these tools so that in the long run, we can still have, you know, limited mill rate growth in reasonable budgets and get things done still. And then we were fortunate, we have ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. The town received $5.3 million. We've spent most of that, and I'll show that in a little bit, but that helped us get some things out of our capital plan and pay for them on a one-off basis, and we were able to take those out, so that helped us out a lot. And this is ARPA. So the town started with a $5.3 million grant from the federal government. Every town got a lump of money based on population. And the boards decided to use part of that for capital projects and the town capital thing, but part of the spirit of ARPA was also being recovery from COVID. So we decided to turn some of the money over to a volunteer committee, and they reached out to the public and had people apply for money, say, how can we use this money to help you? What impact did COVID have on your business or your building? And then they would evaluate that and award some funding. So the committee actually approved $1.9 million of spending for that, and there's a kind of report that details all the different organizations and things like that that received money. And then at the end of that period, they felt like they'd really gone and vetted and came back and said, we're going to take the rest. We think the town should spend it on their needs. And so that money came back to the town, and we've been going through a process through the board selectmen, with more finance to fund different initiatives with that ARPA funding. Right now, we're down to around, I think, $400,000. I'm trying to remember what the, oh, this is $183,000. Okay, yeah, so it's happening and flowing because we have projects that we thought were going to cost 200, and then it ended up costing 150, so we're kind of trying to find out what our balance is. But we have to earmark all of the money by the end of this year, or else you lose it. So the next couple of months, the town is going to go through a process and make sure that we've awarded and can complete all the projects that we've tagged with ARPA funding. But it's been a great thing for the town. It's done a lot for the community, and it's done a lot in terms of helping our capital, a list of capital projects as well. The other thing is we've been very successful at winning a lot of other grants. In total, I think over, since 2021, we've gotten $14 million in grants, just $9 million in 2022, and almost another million in 2023. It's a mixture of state and federal grants. For the first time ever, the town won two federal community-directed spending grants, one for $2.5 million and one for a million. And these are all projects that are in our capital plan that now we can actually get done because we have some help. So we'll be matching some of the town funds to go into those projects, but we're getting a lot of help from the federal government or from the state, depending on the grant. But these are all great things that has helped us move things that had been sitting for many years in our CIP plan. It's helped us kind of get them moving forward now. Want to talk about a grant that the town didn't get directly, but we participated in. I just thought this is kind of a fun thing to talk about. We joined with Guilford and River Valley Transit, which is the old Ny Town Transit. They were branded, you might have seen the RPT, other vehicles. They serve Madison. They applied for a microtransit pilot program. One of the issues that the board has seen here for, we have, we don't have a lot of public transportation in Madison, right? Especially if you live north of 95, there's pretty much nothing. And we've been talking to River Valley Transit. Do we try to have a bus line go up 79? You know, how do we connect Madison with other towns or offer more public transportation options? And that helps for economic development. It just helps for general mobility for people. It's better for the environment. But obviously, we're spread out. You know, we live in neighborhoods. You could have fixed bus stop. It could still be a five-mile walk to 79, right? So what River Valley has been successful at doing is creating these microtransit programs, and it's pretty much on-demand service for bus. It'll come to your house. And you, most of it's done through an app that you can call, so you can call up and request it and say, I need to, and we did this jointly with Guilford, so this is going to actually be, you can go anywhere in Madison or Guilford. You can cross town lines. And so you can call up if you live up on Bartlett and want to go down to Bishop's to do some shopping. You can dial it up in the app, and it'll give you an estimated time. It'll come pick you up at your house, and then they will take you there. And it's a flat fare of $1.75. So they launched this in Old Sabre. You might have seen a lot of kids boarding the bus, buses at the McDonald's right after high school closes. But I, that's what I happen to notice sometimes when I've been in Old Sabra. It's been very successful. They also just launched it at Middletown, and it's very successful. So, you know, it is the future of public transportation, and the River Valley Transit has been kind of trend-setting across the state, so we're doing a lot of these pilot programs. So this will actually be launched May 28th of this, so more information will come out about it. We're going to do some educational pieces. We're going to help seniors if they want to use this, you know, how do you access it? It'll be interesting to see how it gets used, and, but it's a great, and the app is great, and you can like see where all the buses are. It's just like, if you've ever used Uber or Lyft, it's just like that. You can see where they are, and they give you an You can see where they are, and they give you an estimated pickup time and all stuff. So something really cool and different that could provide a real service too. And as I said, this is not through the town, we're not paying for any of this. This is being funded completely through a grant that River Valley Transit received. In terms of projects I talked about, we've got a lot going on. The town emergency shelter, which is putting a backup generator in Poulsen, so our emergency shelter is in Poulsen versus here at the Town Campus Gym, which we know has a lot of problems with it and is not necessarily adequate. So that project is moving forward, we've now received two grants for that, a million-dollar federal grant and $500,000 we just got awarded from the state of Connecticut in December to help pay for that. So that's going to be in the design phase, and it's a little bit ways off. We also have the Town Emergency Operations Center, which is being built as part of the expansion of the Madison Post Building on Route 1. That is a project that has been in CIP for probably 10 years, I don't know. So we were very fortunate, we got a $2.5 million federal grant for that project. They've, the building committee is hoping to, they've hired a construction manager, and they are going full blast, they're hoping to be under construction in 2024, you know, that we're the... We'll see how the timing goes, but that's one that's going to be coming down the pike soon. That'll cause a lot of activity on Main Street, obviously, to see that project happen, but we're really excited about that. Because the town right now, the emergency operations center that we have is in the board event room, right over there. And every time we have to call our emergency operations center together, we have to unlock a closet, and then we have to put all our equipment hooked up ahead of time, and we have to make sure that we can get in there and the board event isn't in there. And so this, most towns have a dedicated EOC, we do not, and this was a needed thing. The Town Campus Geothermal Project, which some of you may have been following, this is something also that had been in CIP for probably 10 years. It's replacing the heating and cooling system in this building, it's old and outdated, and we've had a lot of issues with it. That construction will be starting this month. You'll see tree removals in the back of the building because they'll be having to install geothermal wells, they'll be well drilling, and then they'll be coming into the building, and there'll be a lot of construction activity replacing some of the heating systems and stuff. So you might see some disruption when you come into the town hall. We're going to try to notify people as much as possible and not disrupt town operations as much as we can. But it will be noticeable, and it's an exciting thing, and it's long overdue, so I think we're all here, especially those who have lost air conditioning or heating multiple times and had to deal with fans and all kinds of things. So, but we're excited to see that move forward. The Dade Hennessy Courts, that just got completed over the summer. That was funded through ARPA, and that was another thing that had been in CIP for quite a long time, so we're excited to get that done and it's completed. Beach and Recreation has a number of improvements, the Exchange Field Project, I know a lot of the athletic teams are excited about that, they're designing that, I think, now. I can't remember exactly where it's going, but it's, they're going to be starting to get those fields under construction soon. The Fieldlights Nelson, that was ARPA-funded, and that's going to be started, I guess, I have Winter 2024, I don't know if I'm a year off on that, so I apologize, but that's in the next year. The Dog Park, I know many of you visited that, that was ARPA-funded, that opened in 2023. That was another thing, probably 10 years on the list of projects that we, people wanted us to move forward on, the new playground surf club. So anyways, what's coming up? I think the board's focus is implementing our strategic plan now. And we're working on an implementation plan with staff, and we're going to start reporting to the board about how we're going to be working on that. Continue to follow the Madison Investment Plan strategy, that's our goal as we go through the budgeting process, to make sure that we can follow our financial goals by using that as our tool. Make sure these capital projects get done and completed as promised to residents. Continue to go after grants, we've been successful for so far, so we just want to keep trying to get as much money in here so we can avoid having to tax locally for it. Coastal Resiliency is a big issue, and I think we're going to be spending a lot more time talking about that. This year alone, with all the rain, we've just, the flooding has just multiplied. We've just seen that this is, you know, I think when people think of, they just think of hurricanes, it's just a mild storm with heavy winds, and now we're seeing a real impact. And it's starting to impact our roads, it's really having an impact on us on a more regular basis. Continue to look at ways to improve town operations. And then I know there's a lot of citizen-driven policies that people come to the board. Short-term rentals is one, I think we've on and off again, debated about. We put it on hold a little bit because we were waiting for a decision by the Connecticut Supreme Court. I think once that gets resolved, the town will have to address that issue. I know noise ordinance, that was always discussed in term, in really kind of hand-in-glove with the short-term rentals issue. More recently, tree removal, I know that's been a huge hotbed, you know, topic with residents. Some of our sources' policies have caused that, but also now we're seeing some of the developments going on. People want to just talk more about how can we be more thoughtful with our tree removal, so the board will be, actually on Tuesday morning, talking a little bit about that. We is having to do to, you know, to address that. So, so a lot going on. And with that, I guess, I can answer any questions that people have. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer them if I will, if I may ask. And this will be available on the website, and you can see the previous years, it looks very similar. You can see the differences between the years, but I think the messaging and theme is generally the same, and we're just continuing to see progress on things, so. Oh, yeah, let me, all right, why don't we do a... This, oh, I can't see it from here, it's not wide. So why don't we do questions in the room first, and then we'll go to online.
Can you give us a little more detail on what you're doing coastal with Resiliency?
Well, we're going to first be hearing from them about how, what, they're looking at their charge now. They're not really a regulatory commission, right? They're more of an advisory commission. And so there's been some things that have happened at the state level, so they're going to be coming back to us to talk about what role they play from a regulatory standpoint with the town and how their charge might be handled differently. And then they're also going to be updating their coastal resiliency plan. Ours is, I think those dates back to 2016, but I know one of the objectives is to take that now, update it, and they've already worked through prioritizing projects. So we need to take some of those projects and start putting them into our capital plan. There's also all this federal money coming now because of the Inflation Reduction Act that we might be able to go after as a town, so address some infrastructure issues having to do with coastal resiliency. So all those things kind of, I think this year we need to focus more on. Bruce, you're the liaison, right? Does that kind of cover?
Yeah, I think we're also going to be expanding the scope of what they look at to include flood. So not just the oceanfront and tidal areas, but any areas that are under threat from flooding, as we've seen with all the rainstorms, I've seen water in places I've never seen it before. And like Peggy mentioned, they do go through and look at projects and areas that need to be addressed and make recommendations, mostly through Public Works Town Engineer. But things that would be actionable by the board selection.
Do we have any actionable items on the list now? And what examples of what are they?
So, yes, there is a list, and I think we're looking at the corner of where the beach club is, where we get the perennial flooding. So that's an area of concern, an area that needs to be addressed there. Back when that system was designed, it didn't contemplate the amount of runoff water that it's receiving, and that's causing most of the flooding there, so they're looking, they've got a plan to resolve that. And I think once it develops far enough that we can put a budget next to it, it would be in front of us to make a decision on, but that's an example.
I think it'd be good to mention at this point too, the Garden Sea Point Public Information Question. Yes, there's, so Garden Point, the seawall, that's a coastal resiliency project. We got a state grant for that, that construction is going to be happening this fall. We got to lead a little bit with some of the design issues, but we're having a public information session. What was the date? It's like, yeah, I can't remember anything. The 21st, 21st, it's on the top, I can't remember. But we encourage people to see where the design is, it's really nice, actually. I think it's going to really improve the point, and it's also protect the point, and that's the goal of that, is to really protect what is one of the crown jewels of Madison, so. But we're excited to see that move forward. Yeah, and actually, if you could just state name and address, I should have asked the gentleman earlier, but, yep.
Dennis Crowe, 141 Twilight Drive. I know, I know it's not a budget meeting, but a lot of people in town have been concerned that the fact that we've been reassessed and valuated and so on, that's going to cause their taxes to skyrocket and everything. They don't get the idea that...
Right.
The mill rate goes down as the tax, you know, the assessed value goes up. But if I were to help explain that, so what percentage of the budget is collected through, you know, property taxes? You have, does anybody have any idea?
I mean, that's our primary source of revenue to the town. So I would say 90%, probably. Yeah, probably 90% of our revenues are from property taxes.
Okay, okay.
So that will have a, obviously, the rebound though is really just resetting the stage of the tax base. It doesn't change the budget.
Right, and it only carries every year, and it doesn't seem to affect it.
Yeah, so, I mean, overall, the taxable base is like 38% or something like that overall for the entire... So it's not like the budget's going to go 38, your tax is going to go 38%, it's not.
Right.
It just means the base of which they calculate the tax rate, everything goes like this. So the budget's still the same, so the mill rate will come down.
Right.
So, but you'll see some ebbs and flows, because some people got a higher than 38% to 40% increase in their assessment, and others saw below that, so there's some adjustments. Obviously, some parts of town have seen a bigger real estate boom, and prices go up a lot more than other parts of town. So there will be some people that will see a higher increase than they normally would have expected, but you really won't know until, you know, it kind of all comes together.
Probably based on comparing your percent compared to the percent of the average.
Right.
But, okay, one other thing. We do have what I would think is an excessive rainy day funding, you know, it's over 20% of the budget. That's people's tax money, that belongs to the people, it should be either used on the projects to avoid the debt incurred, or it should be returned to the people, at least, you know, to get it down towards the 10% level or whatever, so.
So I think that's, that's every year, yeah, and that's exactly what the Madison Investment Plan is trying to do. But you've also been victims of our own success, because all of a sudden we get these grants in and we budget different things, so we're getting more money coming in than we planned for a time. So we think we're starting to lean down, we did a $3.5 million appropriation to the capital plan last year. We also did $1 million into the pension fund, fireman's pension fund. The year before that, we did $1 million into the town pension fund. So we've done large appropriations to try to start taking some of that fund balance down. And then we've been fortunate because we've seen revenues come in. We also had, you know, we've sold the property, right, when we sold Janssen. So there's been a lot of ebbs and flows in the last two to three years in there. Our goal is to bring that number down overall. Some of these grant projects that are, we have, we will have to appropriate that money to do the matching. So that's how we've been doing it, we've said, okay, if we're going to spend something out of the fund balance, let's get another dollar for every dollar of the fund balance, we get a dollar or $2 for the federal or state government. So we leverage that money, that was our idea behind it. Let's leverage that money rather than just spend it directly all the time. So should we be spending it? Absolutely. And that's something that boards do through the budgeting process, and we'll be having more conversations. We might do another big appropriation into the capital plan to use that. We've been lucky because we're also getting 5% now on the 20 million. So you appropriate a million out, and all of a sudden you got a million back coming in because of the interest rates. So we've been lucky with that too. I would call it a, you know, but obviously, it is taxpayer money, and we're very, you know, conscious of that. So we want to make sure that it's spent wisely and for what people support in town, which is what's in the capital plan. Those are projects people endorse and the board's moved on, so. Any other questions here? Yes?
Here, I'm going to build our 17 Bartlett Drive. In an effort to improve communication, can you make use of a resource which we currently have in place, which is the automated system to let people know that an event is coming up or there's a warning of some type which you already use for, you know, weather-related occurrences? Can you use that to notify people of meetings coming up that are of high value and that can have a public vote, such as the meeting that we just had, I don't know where it was, the 29th of January, when it was over $250,000, it was the HVAC vote through, could have been a vote.
Well, I think, I think, and one other question is, that particular meeting was scheduled for 6 o'clock. A lot of people are at work or commuting back from work or getting their kids dinner. It's a very, it's a very hard time to have a meeting and expect people to show up. 7 o'clock is much better than 6. But 6 o'clock is pretty tough to muster unless you work here. And, you know, it works for people.
So I just say a couple things, okay, I'll answer your questions. First of all, I think you have to be mindful of when we use the emergency, I learned this during COVID, right? People love getting calls until they don't love getting calls anymore. Now they start getting irritated with things. So I've tried to be consistent in what types of things go into my community messaging, which goes out every two weeks, everything's also on the town website. You know, if the board felt we could set a policy of what should go out through that system, I think we just have to figure it out. I think, because the problem is, it becomes no different than your email box, right? You just blow through it and no one pays attention. And so I've always tried to keep things, I need people to pay attention to the hurricane or the storm, you know? And that's why if they get that phone blast and they get a voicemail message from me, then they know, okay, this is pretty important, I probably should listen to this. So I totally hear what you're saying. I also have people that complain all the time that they don't want these messages. So we have a system that you can get it by text even, by signing up through Madison Alerts, you can get everything texted to you. We also put out a weekly notice that has all the meetings for the week on it. Then that goes out, you can sign up for that through Madison Alerts as well. That'll literally lay out, here's what's going on in Madison each week, and it lists all the meetings. So that goes out every, that goes out every morning. I, you know, because I can't tell what's important to you. I mean, I have people upset that we don't know what a planning and zoning meeting. Most people don't care about any of the planning and zoning meetings unless it's related to...
Every little incidental meeting, the big ones that...
No, no, but I'm just, I'm just giving you...
...that increase our taxes. And I think we...
I understand what you're saying, I'm just explaining the rationale and we're trying to figure this out. But here, you're requesting that, and it's certainly something we can talk about. We just have to have a...
...a policy, a policy.
So... Can I get, can you have it to an app? And I'm, forgive me, because I'm not up to speed on a lot of things. And just name and address for the record. Oh, so it's Gail Alberti in Bartlett Drive, yep. Does the town have an app? Yes, we do. So can we put those notifications on an app?
They're already there.
Oh, they're already there, yeah, okay. And you can set up for now. You can get a text alert, you can have the app, I mean, there's multiple ways things going out. I think the question is, does the board selection decide that for all town meetings, we are going to do a robo-call? You know, I think that's a discussion we should have about what that is, because I've done my best to figure it out, when it's important, when it's not, but the community has different feelings, some in the community do, and so we should have a discussion about that. And that's also one of the goals this year, is to talk about communications, because the other problem is, we have so many different ways to communicate, it gets confusing for people. So we're going to go through a whole review about what we're putting out, on what platform, and where are we getting the best response? We've never stepped, because we just really didn't do any push until about three years ago, no push. COVID really made us push information out. Now we need to step back and look at what's working and what's not, right? What do people like? What are they listening to? Where are we getting the best response? So that's kind of what we can do. Yeah, and then there's social media. And so, but the thing is, is people go to social media, but in the town, post stuff all the time. You automatically post everything on social media. But to have staff have to respond on social media is a Pandora's box in some way. So we're going to be talking about that, how to address questions that come up. Because rather than people calling the town to ask a question or get information, they just post it on the community page. And so, you know, we're trying to figure this out, it's just changing, and I know it's to help people are getting their information. So...
Can I make one of my final qualifications, please? You talked about you'll have a discussion about whether to use the emergency system to notify about all town meetings. I never suggested that. It was about very important meetings and votes.
I understand.
Such as the one that happened in July and the one that just happened with the HVAC and the budgets. That's it. Not every town meeting.
So
The key ones.
So there has to be Well, let's just move on. So I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Even though we have an app, we have to think about elderly people that don't use such tech.
I understand that. Yep.
So Seth Classic, 130 overbrook. I just want to also point out for your benefit and your benefit that the automated town system on the website through the Agenda Center is, you can personalize what messages you get. Like, if you have an interest in inland wetlands meetings, in
RFPs.
Yeah, RFP, whatever. If you have an interest in certain committees or permissions or budget hearings or whatever, you can actually just whittle out and have only those come to you. So there's a lot out there. I hear your point about sometimes
The major ones coming for a vote, and elderly people are not paying attention to it now.
All right, well, I think we're just question and answer now. Point taken. Joan, and then we'll probably go online in case there's some hands raised online.
So Joan Walker, 39, Stepping Stone Lane. I just want to clarify, when I think you speak to, say, town meeting, town meeting is actually, not every meeting that the town has. Town meeting is actually defined in our charter as somewhere where a vote is taken. And that's, I think, what you were trying to point out there. It's not every meeting of every committee. It's actually a legal term where we get, we are a town meeting form of government. So that's where the point is there. Just wanted to question that.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it's a difference.
Okay, so let me go on. There's a few hands. Jeannie, I see there's some hands raised online.
Yes, there are. Hold on one moment.
Great. Sarah, state your name and address, please. And you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, it's Sarah Greenwood. I live at 150 Middle Beach Road. I'm actually in Florida with two other ladies from Madison. Janet Lyons, who lives at 36 East Wharf Road, and Mary Farrell, who is at 77 East Wharf. And I just wanted to voice one more time the concern about the car thieves. You are probably aware that Lori Walz, while she had her car parked at the end of her driveway, walked 10 feet to the mailbox, see the car going backwards, thinking she has forgotten to put the brake on, and in the car is somebody who is stealing the car. So this is in the middle of the day. Lori is a senior citizen. She's lucky she wasn't run over or shot or really, you know, pushed over or whatever. So Peggy, I know that some of this issue is what's going on in terms of Hartford and legislation, that they have raised the age that these people can be arrested and prosecuted. My suggestion is that you take the lead with some of the other mayors of towns in Madison and go up to Hartford and tell them that they need to change the legislation. These people need to be prosecuted. Again, Lori could have been seriously injured. She ran towards the car, and the guy is driving it away. And she ran towards it because she didn't want it to run into the street and cause an accident. So that's my comment, and the ladies who are here with me feel the same way. So, you know, it's, you know, somebody needs to go up there and tell them, this is not acceptable, what is going on now. They need to change the law.
Thank you. Yep, believe me, I used every opportunity to talk about this, because it's something that all the towns on the shoreline are seeing. And it's a common theme. It doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat, everybody recognizes there's issues. Town is taking the steps it can right now in terms of public safety. And during the budget process, when we're talking about more resource behind public safety. But thank you for your comment. Okay, state your name and address, please.
Jim Ferenczi from 47 Seaview. Before I go to pick up on public safety, can I ask how many people are on the Zoom?
31.
31. So last year's meeting, there were six people, I think, in total. I think a lot of people were here because of public safety, and that's the topic that I want to talk about. I find it troubling that in your State of the Town presentation, there was no discussion of this topic. Sarah just hit the most brazen recent situation that has impacted our community, which most of us would call a carjacking. I know Chief Trump would disagree with that because there was no violence, but I think most common citizens would call that a carjacking. I'm going to get to my question in a second, but let me give you a little bit of data. You took us through a lot of data in your presentation. 212, 212. Per the Madison Police Department, that's the number of reported motor vehicle thefts and thefts from motor vehicles in the past three years in our town. These incidents are occurring all around Madison, north, south, east, and west. And that number, 212, does not reflect the number of criminal perpetrators that are routinely roaming our neighborhoods, typically at night, but now we see in broad daylight. At various recent meetings, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Police Commissioners have heard firsthand testimony from several dozen concerned citizens, all echoing fear, frustration, and anger about what's going on. Ed Dolling, as I've mentioned before, has characterized the rash of car thefts and car break-ins as having reached a watershed moment that requires hardening to target. Now, we acknowledge that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance recently approved a special appropriation for license plate reading cameras. That's a good first step, but it's only a first step. Based on our conversations with the Board of Police Commissioners and Chief Trump over the past three years, and they're the town experts, by the way, on public safety, we understand a couple of things. First of all, as highlighted in one of the recent budget workshops, Madison has fewer active police officers per capita than any other nearby town. The fewest. There are some things being the fewest is good, like golf. But having the least amount of police protection is probably not one of them. Secondly, our active officer headcount is net down during the past few years. And Madison Police have an extremely complicated and challenging geographic footprint to cover. So what we understand as part of the budgeting process, as you just alluded to, is that Chief Trump and the Board of Police Commissioners have asked for funding to hire two additional police officers to increase the police presence to deal with some of these issues. It's not 10, it's not 3, it's not 5, it's not 7, it's 2. And so I have a simple question that I'm getting to, which is, in this upcoming budget process, are you, as the first selectman and each member of the Board of Selectmen, are you going to approve the hiring of these two additional police officers to help ensure our safety and quality of life? It's a simple question, but I think what you're hearing from Sarah and others in the community, and what you've heard from all the people that have testified at these various meetings, is that the answer to this question has to be yes. And then further, as Sarah suggested, this town, in my view, needs to band together with other towns and press this issue both in New Haven and Hartford. But my real question is, do you support adding additional funding as part of the budget process to meet the needs that Chief Trump and the police commissioners, as experts, have requested?
Okay, so this is not a budget meeting. I will say that I am supporting an addition of a police officer, but we're going through those deliberations right now. So I don't want to derail this. This is just a general overview of the state of the town, what we've been and what we're doing going forward. But you're welcome to attend those budget deliberations. It's going to be several public meetings, as well as the Board of Finance will then do their review.
Yeah, but just to be clear, just to be clear, my view
I told you already my views on this, and this is really not the appropriate forum for this to stay.
You're going to shut me down?
Well, you have, you're saying multiple meetings now. We've had conversations about this, and I said I'm supporting the police department. So with that, I would prefer not to have this side rail into a debate on the budget. That is not, there are other meetings where that can happen, okay?
Well, I was asking a question about the state of the town.
So I've talked about in here that public safety is a priority. We're putting more resources behind public safety. We're not deep diving into specific things within departments. Of course, this is an important issue. So we've talked about public safety, and it is an important issue, all right? All right, with that, any other hands raised? Jeannie?
There are no other hands raised, but somebody did type in a question. Are you able to see it?
Yes, I mean, it's anonymous, so technically we kind of need it for the record. Just ask differently. How does the town address the burden of real estate escalation for those who perceive more than a 50% assessment because of more robust real estate market attracting a transient population? And those who are longtime residents have a place on the housing affordability agenda. These residents have not bought in an inflated real estate market and may be forced out, especially in the 30% population. I mean, I think this is really what the Affordable Housing Committee is really focused on, and also our senior tax relief programs, which do, you know, provide extra benefits based on longevity for people who live within town. So that was something the board took up last year and did make some changes, recognizing people that had longevity in town. And then affordable housing, when we talk about this. It's not about making it affordable for new people to move. It's also for people to be able to stay here, particularly downsizing the town. Because a lot of residents want to stay here, but they want to move into a smaller footprint in town that requires less meat. So, okay, well, with that, then, I think, I guess
One more question.
One more question, yes.
Yeah, Jay Alfred, 354 Bartlett Drive. So I enjoyed the presentation, and I thought it was very informative. A lot of good things I heard, but there is now a concern. If you go to the community challenges paid, the need for more policing and the threat to the carjacking is not even listed, and that
No, I mean, I think that's a fair point. That's a fair point. Shouldn't it have been a challenge? I focus more on what the strategic plan had in it. So, well, the strategic plan didn't lay out as a specific challenge, but it has public safety as a priority in terms of budgeting. So
So one of the things I heard on one of the questions is that partnering with other towns. So would you consider having another committee, starting another committee that'll reach out to other towns for public safety?
Well, that's what a police department does. They work as a task force along the shoreline. They're the professionals. I have to say, I would not rely on everyday residents to come up with policing policies. It's a very
Yeah, it's just kind of like an awareness of what's going on in town and what
That's a fair point in terms of, and we've actually, one of our goals this year is to talk about how we communicate and inform the public better about what is happening in town from a public safety standpoint. So that is an objective this year, and I'm asking for resources to put behind that communication piece, because I think we could make some improvements there, for sure. In terms of educating the public, I know the police does a lot of outreach with vulnerable populations, meeting with people, having senior citizen meetings. They had a team for tax force, didn't you? Chief Trump, if you want to just mention, there's a lot of public outreach efforts that are done by the police department?
Sure, good evening, everybody. Basis of the problem that we want to accept or not is that, one, the crime is on the rise in town in Madison all the years. I know we like to look at Madison as a Roman Reigns painting, but the point is that they're coming here. The car that was stolen the other day was found in New York. So they're coming from all walks of life, all towns, all cities, all states. It's a juvenile justice problem. It's hard reaching. We have kids 12 to 16 years of age being raised by subjects, grandparents. We have the sense to keep the family together, but they're on fixed income. These kids are going out doing what they do and coming back for money that household has ever seen. There is money being, proposals coming out of transportation, public safety judiciary on dealing with the crisis of juvenile justice. I've been to the meeting statewide. They're overwhelmed. Everybody that's worked within the system, from a person of probation to the person of juvenile, they are overwhelmed. Every time a subject retires within the state of Connecticut, I'm not allowed for public office, what they do is they eliminate the position. They pass it back out to the towns for some sort of recovery to it. Example is, we not collect money for state weapons. So not to permit we collect it for the state. There's that. When I have my days in the state police, I have an office, a bunch of people, that doesn't exist. So juvenile justice, I go to the meetings and you see that, you see them arise. We don't have facilities. It's, I can't, I mean, for a simple protection order, I have to send two police officers to the cave, to sit there and wait for a judge or someone to sign off on it. Nothing against the system, but that is the system. So juvenile justice is frustrating. It's frustrating for us that we arrest a kid, a juvenile, we turn them back over. Then they're caught three, four days later in town of Bradford. You read that one of them got killed up in Weathersfield. That was in Madison not two weeks earlier, after they drove in the side of a house. So that's the frustration. I've had this a long time. I've tried to find an answer, friend. I know that just from my work in the streets with a task force to encourage law enforcement, that much has happened. These kids are living two, three, four in an apartment. The only one that's in contact with life is the grandparent. There isn't any funding or anything to help them. They're not going to get out of this. I mean, for me, I can sit there and spat out of meetings a lot of money. We need to develop a juvenile justice system, and we educate, rehabilitate, and send them off. It's not happening. We'd rather put a million, two million to a stadium or add something to an existing stadium. That's what they do. So that's my two cents. We're working on this. I appreciate your support, but this is a process, for those that aren't listening, to get equipment and technology for the police. If you just kind of arbitrarily throw it, it'll probably not work.
And we've been working very much on this. So, and it's been an ongoing thing over the last two years. We did add more force two years ago, and we're going to add some more this year. So we continue to put more resources, try to tackle. But I think the regional cooperation in terms of just partnering with our towns and chief has also done a lot of work there with other police departments.
They're moving that way.
So, okay, with that, then, I guess we will close out the town meeting. I don't know, you closing? No, I'm okay. Okay, all right, well, thank you for your time. We're going to adjourn the meeting. Adjourn the meeting, okay. That's why I got to adjourn. I forgot this is not a town meeting.